Is there any other rapid mission that anybody would like to add before we move on?
Need not for yet, we'll see in Blizzard not first two games they won and Winkler. Winkler was the top rated team in the league and we took two games from them. We play it down here Wednesday and Thursday.
Yep. So that's great news. So if anybody wanted to share anything, feel free to share when you're coming up. Like I said, we'll call this meeting to order and we'll have a resolution to adopt the agenda.
Resolution number twenty twenty five zero five four, moved by myself, second by Councilor Allen, resolved that the agenda be adopted as presented.
Uh, our favor. Post being done. Okay, so first off, what we're gonna do tonight, as we have a bit of a presentation from our controller Laura, who's gonna just kinda go through sort of some of the highlights that we did in the last meeting that we held at the, at the arena. And, and then sort of open it up for some questions after the presentation. So if there's still some questions there. I would just ask though, just because we, I'm glad to see everybody out here tonight. I would just ask though, if you have, if you're representing one group, if just one person could come up and share the concerns. If you wanna keep talking, if you want more of you to come up, that's fine too. We're not restricting you, but not just for the sake of time. I don't wanna restrict anybody from, from speaking, but if we don't really need to repeat. And then we'll have, at the end of the presentation, you'll see there's a bit of a process that happens with regards to formal objections and all that sort of stuff, the time period, and we'll go through that with you at the end. All right, so over to you, Laura.
Um, for our agenda today, uh, thank you for that. And we'll talk about purpose of the meeting, we'll explain the special service levies to you. Why they're supposed to be implementing them and how some questions and feedbacks and again, that's enough so that you guys can.
Sorry Laura, can we talk about four things?
Sorry, thank you. Usually pretty often here too. So the purpose and why we're here today is to explain a proposed special service levy, show how the cost will impact taxpayers and present this to council for first reading at a bylaw. The proposed special service levy is to cover just over three point two million dollars in RCMP costs. Originally, we budgeted this for three point nine, however, this was lowered and as we don't anticipate that the RCMP will be able to fill all their vacant positions by the end of the year. Twenty twenty four actuals came in just over two point nine million. So currently, our leasing costs are covered through general taxation, which means that property owners with higher assessments pay more, even though every property owner receives the same level of service. Under the proposed special service levy, all eligible properties will contribute equally, aligning the cost with benefits received while supporting economic growth and new development in our community. So municipal taxation, general taxation is based on the assessed value. A special service levy is a portion equally on per property. Hopefully everyone can see it. So here we outline how the general mill rate is calculated and how it applies to calculate your taxes. So the general mill rate is determined by taking the municipal expenditures that are not covered by other revenues and dividing it by your total assessed value of all properties that are within our municipality. That's then multiplied by a thousand and that will equal the mill rate. In our case, we've got about twelve million dollars in expenses and just under two hundred and thirteen million in assessed values.
So our community, just so for the assessed value is the assessment branch comes in, looks at our entire community and says it's valued at this. And they get to that two hundred and thirteen million dollars. And that's why for us as a community, we're always trying to raise up that number because it, it's better for us in the taxation world all overall.
So your property taxes are then determined by taking your property's portion assessed value, so either forty five percent or sixty five percent, depending upon if you're residential or commercial property. You divide that by a thousand and times the five million rate.
Does everybody understand how that works? Does it need more information?
A little bit of a calculation up here on the board, I'm not sure if everyone can see it. Basically, your assessed value of your property.
From the assessment branch.
Yeah. So if your property was assessed at, let's say a hundred thousand dollars, because residential is forty five percent, they're only taxed based on forty five thousand dollars. You then take that divided by a thousand and times by the mill rate. That mill rating then is determined by our total municipal budget and expenditures that are not covered by other revenues such as grants or municipal funding and divided by the total assessed value of our whole entire community times the amount, that number is calculated. Does that make a little bit of sense? Yeah. That based on assessment can reduce our ability to attract development of single family homes. And it discourages property improvements and places a higher tax burden on higher assessed value homes, all for the same services. A special service levy is attached to a that's been authorized by the province and allows municipalities to redistribute taxes in an equal and fair way. It provides a stable and predictable redistribution of the hospital supporting development. It's not an additional tax, as the expenses are removed from general taxation and added back as a fixed charge.
So everybody understands it's not in new tax. It's a redistribution of taxes. So the portion that you were actually being taxed on before on an assessed value, you're getting taxed on the entire pot. When you remove the RCMP out of it, you divide that amongst everybody equally and that pot now is smaller and that's what your mill rate is assessed against.
We'll show you some examples. So the calculation, just my, um, how the special service levy is calculated, it's basically the same calculation as your normal taxation. However, again, that portion is removed and it reduces down the mill rate. So in this case, the normal mill rate would have been fifty seven point zero seven seven if we would not implement a special service levy. It would be reduced down to forty two. So that three point two million dollars is removed out of municipal expenditures, reducing the mill rate to forty two. You then use that same calculation we talked about before, when that mill rate is now forty two, special service levy onto the backside. In this case, the special service levy is at a hundred ninety nine dollars and eighty cents.
For twenty twenty four, or twenty twenty five.
Um, one of the things that I'd want is that with a special service levy, properties that are considered otherwise exempt can be brought into the special service levy. And we've done that in this case. So some of the commercial properties will now be subject to a mill rate that will be fifteen point zero seven seven. While the properties that were exempt for residential will be subject to the seven ninety nine eighty. So some examples of the residential ones are there's some properties that the government owns, so the province of Manitoba. They were previously exempt from general taxation. And then we also have for the commercial sides of the churches and as well as Kelsey School Division, they will also be subject to the fifteen point zero seven seven mill rate. So here we've highlighted the tax impact for residential properties. So you can see at about a level of a hundred and seventeen nine, there'll be no impact. Where those that are assessed at a value that's lower than that, we'll see an increase in taxes and those that are assessed at higher value will see a tax decrease.
And that's residential, that's a residential chart, right?
This is a residential example, yeah.
Everybody understand what that chart looks like? Does it need more information? So we want you to be clear. So that works. So I think what Laura's highlighted there, you see the yellow part, the yellow line going across there. That assess, that home would be assessed at a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, seven hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred. If you go across the line there, about forty five percent of that is the fifty three dollars. So as of today, if you, we had no change, that mill, that cost of that taxation for that home would be three thousand and twenty eight dollars. Hundred a new one? You can see that the actual forty two now is a mill rate because of the removal of the, of the special circuit, because of the RCP costs. Your forty two mill rate now actually moves the taxation down, general taxation to two thousand two hundred and twenty eight. But then you have to add back in the special service levy of seven ninety nine and some change, which brings it sort of the same. So as you go up the chart where it says higher tax burden, you would see that as I get further away, so lower assessed homes are gonna have to pay a little bit more. And so if I look at the seventy five thousand dollar home, their increase in their taxation would be about two hundred and ninety one dollars. As you go the other direction, as you look at a two hundred thousand dollar home, their reduction in taxation would be about five hundred and fifty seven dollars. And I think it's important to just see like where we looked at the higher tax impacted burden. So thirty two percent of the role numbers or the, or the people that pay taxes will be impacted in a, by adding more taxes or having to pay a little bit more taxes based on the new mill rate and the special service levy, going the other direction, sixty eight percent, you're gonna start seeing reduction. And as you get further away from that zero point, that's where it changes. Does that make sense? Do you know, I'm not saying you have to agree with it. I'm just trying to say if it makes sense and if you need to have more information.
Hey, so here we, sorry to.
Say just on that, if anybody wants to know exactly how it's gonna affect your property, if you call them forward, we can tell you the exact how it's gonna affect whether it's gonna go up or down. So you just, just give us your address and we can calculate it like just over this long. Here's what, here's how it will impact you directly.
I did also hear, and I don't know where it came from, but I feel like I heard that somebody had said that the chart was a little bit different and yes, it is a little bit different because before the number was nine hundred and forty dollars, but now the number that is being used is seven hundred ninety nine eighty. So the chart has changed a little bit.
Yeah, because we reduced the RCMP cost from the three point nine to the three point two.
Yeah, and just to put some context around that, when, when we, when we were again, early in our process, right? So we were looking at the RCP cost and what the community is using is based on the projections that are coming from the RCMP. And that's what we use as budgeted numbers. If the, if the budgeted numbers and they hit all their targets, it would have been that three point nine million dollars. But from what we're seeing, we're gonna be a little bit more, less conservative and, and not worry about that part of it and go what we think is realistically working with the RCMP on their invoicing of what we think twenty twenty five is gonna come in on. And that's why the number is lower. So all it does is just reduces the special service levy amount.
Okay, so here we just wanted to highlight some other communities that also have special service levies and provide a comparison of what it looks like in their communities for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessed home comparison to the pot. And what it would look like if the special service levy is implemented. And you can see here that we're kind of in the average. A lot of them have special service levies in place for various different things, RCP costs, garbage pickup, protect other protective services like fire, recreation and snow removal. So here's the phone number to our main office that you guys can jot down if you'd like, so that if you have any questions or concerns, you can give us a call.
Feel free now, like, floor is open if you have.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're getting the, oh, sorry. And just maybe before we get to questions, just let's finish the presentation, Laura, just go to the one next step. So sort of outline what actually happens after, after the public servant, not public service, public hearing tonight. And then just so you know that after tonight, Laura can kind of go through what happens. And then we can take some questions and try to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, so we're providing fourteen days after today to submit a formal written objection to us directly. That objection has to include, and this is asked per the municipal act, a statement of a person's objection to the proposed bylaw, your name and street address, identification of parcel of land and the person's signature. So please make sure all those things are put on any objections we receive or the municipal board won't even consider them.
And they drop them off here, Laura?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
So you need both the civic address and legal description?
A civic address is just fine if you don't have a legal description.
A lot of people don't know.
Whatever's on your, yeah, whatever's on your house bill is sufficient, yeah.
So just the civic address will be good enough.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. And if twenty five or more affected taxpayers submit an objection, then the special service levy will automatically go to the municipal board for review.
Yep.
And the municipal board will assess the fairness and the impact of the levy and they may hold an additional hearing before making a final decision.
Questions, folks? Do you wanna just come up and introduce yourself with your name so we get you on the record?
My name is Brian Hamble, I'm a property at number ten, Bud Place. Do you have a list of the role numbers that this will be affecting? The reason I ask is I also own a piece of property that's owned as light industrial, but on my tax notice it says residential. So to my, does my property that's owned by industrial also get lumped into this?
It's considered residential use. That's very strange that that's.
Yeah, so the property is being questioned and I can't build on it due to your bylaws because it's too small. And there's nobody living on it. And if that, but I maintain it, so it will increase in taxes. I also have another two properties that are worth forty six dollars a year in taxes. They don't even have a road to go to them. So I guess those will go up by eight hundred dollars.
If there's things like that, hopefully we'll deal with that as they come along, but I would suggest you stop in and see the staff.
Well, no, that's why I'm asking is.
Yeah, I don't have.
Trying to find out if you guys really looked at the big picture.
Yeah, we did look at the.
So that pretty much will do what Flint won did, where Flint won ended up with a whole bunch of properties due to their levies.
Well, what we did, no, what we, what we looked at for everybody's information is a developable lots. So what you're pointing out is that if the lot can't be developed, it doesn't really take an actual special service levy. It's, we weren't trying to target those lots that said this is a non-developable lot.
You're kind of, it's not a blanket, it's more you'll pick and choose which ones are.
No, we have to, we, our staff are actually going through that to ensure that if we believe that that lot can be developed, then yes, you'll get taxed because we're encouraging you to develop your.
Don't have a list of all the lots that you're.
We have a list of all the lots that they're working for. I don't have it in front of me, but they are working.
Available to the public to look at?
Yeah, they can, for sure we can do.
Yeah, if you drop down some of your addresses, we'd be happy to.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Question, but I would just like to do a brief presentation on how I feel the effect of this will be.
Sure.
My name is Val Miran and I live at five fifty six Bigelow Avenue. So I was at the hearing on February the twenty sixth, did anyone hear you? Okay. And say that I was opposed to the implementation of this. So the results of removing these costs from the general mill rate to a special service levy will be the highest burden on shifted on to citizens who own smaller and older homes with lower assessments. And the reasons that they live in these homes is because that's all they can afford. Who owns these homes? Often it's young families or even single people who are just starting out. And that's all they can afford. Also, there are people say who are downsizing, who had bigger homes, now their children have grown up and they're downsizing, they have retirement incomes with reduced money and they're looking at reducing their cost by moving into lower assessed homes. Then there's also a number of seniors on fixed incomes who have not seen an increase in Canada or old age pension in any degree that we can even call an increase in many, many years. So these are all the people that I know that own these homes. Now, I understand that residential property assessment, and this is based on the twenty sixth, so I think it's a little lower, but I'm just gonna give you the information that I had prior to this hea- hearing. So property had an assessment of ninety thousand dollars. And with the RCMP costs included in the mill rate, their taxes would be approximately two thousand five hundred and seventy. And with the RCMP costs removed, then the special service levy, their taxes would increase to two thousand seven hundred and ninety three. So that's a two hundred and twenty three dollar increase for that property. And then properties with less than the ninety thousand in assessment would have their taxes increased even more. And I understand that there are approximately six hundred residential properties experiencing issues. Just generally speaking. And so with all these people and looking at people with limited incomes, what will they have to cut in their spending to afford increased taxes? Now, we look at two hundred and twenty three dollars, maybe most of us here, it's not a big deal. But it is a big deal. If somebody has very limited income. And then the special service levy bylaw will be for four years. And those RCMP costs will increase around, I think, has to be three percent in each of the years. So each of these lower assessed properties will see an increase in their taxes every year for the next four years, which is the duration of the file. Now, town council is closest government to the people. You, seven members of council, and each of you do know people who own those lower assessed properties and know a lot of people in those lower tax brackets, whether they are young families or seniors, and you know that they're gonna be impacted. So my hope is that council will give serious thought and vote against implementing this file. That way you are supporting the population you represent who will be negatively impacted. I did not realize until last week that churches would also be included in paying the special service levy. The classification is non-commercial industrial properties. So these right now are classified as partially exempt and most of them just pay the debenture level, so very thin. But they will see a very significant increase into their taxes. So the church that I belong to will see an increase of approximately one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. And the larger churches, I asked for a second, a number on the larger churches, they're gonna see an assessment increase of approximately six thousand dollars. So that's very significant. So churches are struggling to keep their doors open and they're experiencing the same rising costs homeowners. I have informed most of the churches in the community of this because like I said, I really wasn't aware of it until just last meeting. So I let them all know. So I'm thinking that there will be objections filed from these churches as well. And it's like, I was wondering like what other partially exempt, non-commercial industrial properties are going to be affected? Nothing was mentioned above this in that meeting on the twenty sixth of February, so are they not? Do they not know that this is coming up? Will they, like, you as council, and I guess I'll put myself as, because I know administration with county law, we're aware of all this assessments and impacts and special service levies and whatever else, but how much of this does the general public know? Most of the general public, maybe not most, but quite a bit. All they know is they get a tax bill in August that they have to pay. And they don't know about all this stuff. So how many people who aren't here absolutely are not aware of this? And like I said, you are the closest to the people as the government. I think that this is not a good way to go about looking at collecting your RCMP. I know you lobby all the time with this, but I think that needs to be continued. I think this is just wrong that people with lower assessments and lesser income are the the ones that are really gonna be impacted very negatively. How many of them are gonna end up in tax sale? There are some that know because they can't afford this. So I'm saying, please consider voting this down and not proceeding with it. You did try to do something similar in two thousand and eighteen and there was a blessing that council did not proceed with that. And I'm really hoping that you'll see that this is negative. Now, other communities that impose this, whether it's Flint one or whoever, how many of those that, the little people that were negatively impacted didn't know either? And the next thing they know, they get their tax bill in whatever month they get it. Wow. But it's too late, it's already implemented. So I'm really asking that you can seriously consider not voting in favor of this file. Thank you.
No, thank you for your comments and feedback. Just one thing I'll just add. We, we will continue to lobby regarding RCMP costs. I mean, it's on the top of our list in every opportunity we get when it comes to trying to change municipal services contracts, not only for our community, but for other communities that are going through that. We'll continue to do that. And, and again, just, you know, I apologize that we, we are, we are trying to be as transparent and open with the public as possible to, to hold these things and, and try to get the information up. I apologize if we didn't talk about the churches of the, it was unintended. It, it was not meant that we were trying to hide anything at all. We, we, you know, we've been, I think, as open and as we can around this whole process. And again, I know it's not here to, everybody's not going to agree with it. We do appreciate everybody's feedback on it. Any other?
And to Medcalf. Chair of Executive Council of Usbiscity United Church. I'd just like to indicate that we're very, very, very opposed to this. This means an increase in our our tax, taxes by over fifty three hundred dollars, which is an eight percent increase in our budget, which we don't have and it is. And if we pass on the increase to our tenant, they would suffer an increase of approximately two hundred dollar. If we passed on the increase to our tenant, they would suffer an increase of approximately two hundred dollars a month. This would be an increase of fifteen percent to her. Is also affecting the potentially passed on to our, our user groups. In addition to our main rent or other dues may be affected. Because of the high cost of, of the uh. Of this, this assessment. I don't understand why. You're looking at this special service levy when it. Would have gone through on normal taxes at a reduced rate than what it was last year. According to the indications that I've seen, but uh. Why are you? Taxing the churches?
I'm not sure I understand. Could you just explain, or somebody explain what, what would be? Would have went.
I thought you, the indications were.
Rate of the three point nine to three point two, is that what you're referring to now? Yeah. You just talked about the cost of the RCMP as a whole, you're talking about the three point nine to the three point two reduction.
Why the reduction?
No, no.
Oh, okay, yeah.
He's wanting to know why, why are we taxing churches when there's already gonna be a reduced cost from what we originally anticipated of the three point nine to the three point two?
I guess I'll, I'll, I'll try to speak for council. I know that uh, that wasn't an easy discussion that we had. And, and it was uh, trying to come to some sort of semblance of, again. Moving to the fairness part, uh, and, and saying, what are we, what were we trying to do? What we were trying to do is distribute uh, taxation or costs uh, through um, role numbers or businesses. Uh, equally. And, and the reason why we believed at the time, and we appreciate the feedback, is that um. Churches do generate some revenue and uh, and we felt that. Uh, I'm, I'm just telling you, I'm, I'm not, I'm just telling you what the discussions were. And uh, and there was some discussions that churches do have some revenue generating abilities. And that uh.
Well, we'd like to know what they are.
Yeah. No, I hear you. Again, it wasn't, it wasn't an easy discussion and, and uh. And we, we do. Understand where you're coming from on it.
But I, like I say, I don't understand why you're taxing the churches. When I first came here in the late eighties, early nineties. There was no taxes on the churches whatsoever, not a penny. And then after that, it just keeps increasing every year.
Yeah.
And now you get to the point where you're gonna tax us out of existence because we can't afford a tax bill of over five thousand dollars. If it goes through, that means the death now of our church.
Yeah, now we hear you. Okay, I appreciate that. What's your hair, Mr. Bucan? Get ready for the camera.
My name is Grant Buchanan, sixty-four Williams Street. And I'm here to follow up on Jim's comments. I'm. Chair of the Property Committee of Westminster United Church. Now. If the special levy goes through, it'll be applied to commercial businesses, properties. The difference is that many of the clients and businesses. Have people who come from out of town who buy their services for the cost of being passed on to them. We don't have out of town people coming to our church unless it's a funeral. And the cost of the funeral is gonna go up if this goes through and is applied to churches. So I would seriously. Ask council. To reconsider applying the special levy to churches. I can tell you. Some of the figures right now across Canada, one church every week is closing down. Our church is operating on. A deficit budget this year. If we didn't have a dance. Tenement downstairs. We probably would be able to last maybe five years. We can't pass this kind of an increase on to a small congregation. We might average twenty-five people come a week. All of the other community services groups that use our church would have a worry.
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you.
No, thank you. Anybody else?
If I may.
Yes, you may.
Um, I don't, I am not resident here in Brandon, or in Surrey, in the PA. But I am by the Manitoba Act being. Owner of Christ Church, uh, PA, as Bishop of Brandon. And it, just a reminder for everyone, that churches by CRA are not for profit. And we aren't meant to spend anything that we receive. I don't know of the other church in the town. But I know of them, my own Anglican churches across the province, that there are, I can count on one hand. Probably less than one, one full hand, how many of all of the Anglican churches actually come up with a zero balance? At the end of the year. And the benefit to the community because of the churches with the involvement of food banks, volunteers. Who love to serve, um, the purpose of why they're in the church. Because they volunteer in other not-for-profit agencies. Uh, to contribute to the community would be, it's important to the community. And I would be concerned with the churches being faced with, if they are no longer able to balance their budgets to pay their heat and hydro. Um, that, that they have to close. The benefits of the community from the people who attend the churches is lost.
Yeah.
But then the benefit to the community as well, from churches who have to close their doors and are then going to go. Uh, becoming rears on taxes they are paying because they have nothing. And very few churches are able to sell their properties. To sort of go into business completely. We have different rules around that. So just to keep in mind that the churches themselves. Um, the ability to pay a special levy uh, will be a great strength, especially on the bigger churches, um, the bigger properties. Uh, but also the, the negative effects, the, the knock-on effects of that would be more far-reaching than simply the finances.
Anybody else? Okay, I see uh, no further questions. Uh, so uh, we will close up our question and answer. Does anybody from council wanna make any comments prior to uh, we close up the discussion?
A couple. Uh, as Mayor said, when we brought up the uh, church issue, uh, there's a lot of discussion around that. I'm glad you're here tonight to give us the feedback. Uh, nothing's cast in stone until we actually do it. Uh, so that's positive feedback, and we realized what the impact was gonna be. Uh, I did realize it would be, but granted, it's fifty-three hundred dollars, six dollars, that's substantial, so. Um, we'll take that into consideration. Um. Now, when you're talking about uh, smaller, lower assessed homes. Uh, you know lots of people that are in lower assessed homes that are gonna be struggling with this. I know people in higher assessed, uh, that are gonna be welcome to have a little bit of tax relief. The people that bought homes in our community for uh, one or two, three hundred thousand dollars. When interest rates were low, interest rates went up. Now they're paying a lot more, they're struggling. So they're struggling at both ends. The whole premise, what we were trying to do, two, two things. Try and make it fair, because everybody in the community gets police services. Every lot gets a police service, remember that all. So we said, if everybody gets it, everybody should be paying for it fairly, equally. The other one was uh. No, just one more. Gonna say. Boy.
Is that a word?
Where's my wife? The uh. Had a, it's gonna rain now, I don't have a rain, I don't remember. Uh. The higher assessed. Both been down, that's what it's, to attract the people to come to town to build, build homes. Uh, as you know, in the past, we sold lots for a dollar, we sold for twenty thousand and everything in between. People, first thing they come to town and they look to buy, they say, your taxes are so high. Like, so this by reducing, by putting the special levy in there, reducing the mill rate, taxes are gonna be lower on higher-end homes. People are coming to town, they're building higher-end homes, they're not building. A hundred thousand dollar home or fifty thousand dollar homes, they're building a higher one. So the other fork in this, we wanted to attract people to come to town, be able to afford the taxes. It's been long known by people that follow our taxes, they're one of the highest in Manitoba, and uh. Mayor Ron's spoken, talking in the mirror right now, just saying like that's something we wanted to try and reduce. This is one way to do that. If we're attracting, we have to build our base. As the mayor said, we have to build our base, and if we do that, the town is further ahead all around. So. Bottom line, we want it to be fair. The feedback we're getting tonight is positive. Uh, it's nice to see everybody come out and uh, express your views. And uh, as Mayor says, we tried to, we started talking about this uh, last year in the fall. Uh, kind of floating out the special levy, what it was, and we've talked about it, most council meetings have been brought up. And the idea of having a public meeting, it wasn't a hearing, but we need just information sharing so as we can get it out there and get feedback. Uh, so I think we're doing a good job on that, but we can do better.